Okay, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for joining us this evening. Jody, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, one moment. Sorry. Dennis?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Hollenbaugh?
Here.
Odericio?
Here.
Phipps?
Here.
Robinette?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Okay, the minutes from our meeting on February 5th have been distributed for your perusal. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adopt those?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Correspondents, do we have any correspondents this evening?
Yes, one item. The financial budget summary report for the month of January 2024 was received and distributed to council prior to this evening's meeting and is noted for the record.
Okay. Thank you very much. Brings us to lobby visitations. We have lobby visitations this evening?
We do. Bob Kryncamp?
I would ask that when you come up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bob Kryncamp. If you don't know how to spell that, it's B-O-B. I live in Wayne, Ohio, but I was a resident here at Bowling Green for a number of years. I'm here to give you an update because I don't know the exact date that I last stood up here when we were in a different building and in different chambers. But we were here and we asked you for some money and you came up with $150,000 that started our project. And I just want to give you a report that since then, we have raised almost double that. By the end of this month, I'm looking at we will be just short of $300,000 for this project. Now, I was, you were talking about spending some of this extra money. And since the snow machine wasn't approved, we could take that extra $50,000.
We just put, we just put that on ice.
Oh, God. Now, watch out, that's a slippery slope. But if you, if you would like to spend that, we could take that extra $50,000 and we could actually start this project next week. Our goal has been around 350 to 400,000 and we're so close to 300,000 now that we could go out and get this started. I would love to have it started and have us being able to play pickleball by this fall over at the community center, which I think is a realistic goal because we have, it hasn't been easy raising the private funds, but we're getting there. A little, a little kick from the city council could help us get there quicker. And then, then we can start raising money for continuing to, for the upkeep of the, of the courts. So I, I just want to thank you for, first of all, I'll thank you properly for the 150,000 and ask you if, if there is anything available that you consider giving us a little bit more money to get the project underway. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Kry, if I may?
Sure.
In terms of timeline, at first, congratulations, you guys have done a great job, you know, with the private fundraising, building awareness, keeping the momentum going. In terms of construction timeline, you mentioned having the courts open by the fall. But how long do you think that full process would take?
Well, not including the, the drawing, the designs and all that, but the actual construction. Perrysburg finished their courts in about three months. Brian, was it about? It took them actually about three months from start to finish for the actual construction. Now, the preparation, you know, having the courts designed and going out for bids, you know, I'm guessing a couple more months. But if we could get all this started, you know, in April or May, why, we could very possibly have courts to play on this fall.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Charlotte Wright?
You pronounced my name right. That's a rarity. Thank you. My name is Charlotte Wright. I'm at 428 South Main here in Bowling Green. Those who have seen me speak before at meetings will know that I am both verbose and morose. I will not be either of those this evening. I just wanted to stop by and say that it has been just shy of about three months since BG City Council passed Resolution 3859 in support of a market-based component to enhance citizen quality of life through improved air quality. And on behalf of both myself and all of those who spoke in favor of the resolution, we just wanted to stop by and thank the council again, including former council member Nick Rambando again, for the bipartisan support. When we see extreme weather and political gridlock on the news every day, I am grateful to see both support for environmental issues and a healthy democratic process alive here in my own hometown. And I hope that this resolution is just one step forward to a national and indeed a worldwide path to a safer, better future. So thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Brian Sell?
Hi, my name is Brian Sell. I live at 17136 Mercer Road here in Bowling Green. And I'm also here representing the pickleball club. Right now, I'm a member of the, what we call the PAG or Pickleball Advisory Group. And we're working, we meet monthly with the city, specifically with Krista Notley and Ivan. So I guess it'd be the parks. And the reason that the momentum on this thing has been to continue, or continued and moved forward is because it really is a positive thing and the people that get involved it are so dedicated to it. I mean, it's, I, I'm a retired pharmacist. I spent 43 years behind a counter, standing in a three-foot square, helping people with medicine and advising them on health and whatnot. And right now, I go to the community center probably at least four or five times a week for two to three hours. And I'm telling you that there are people there that this has helped more than any medications. I mean, I'm talking, you know, mental stability, depression, getting them out of the house, health, exercise, all of that. So I'm not really here to say that pickleball is a great thing because I think it is and I hope you guys all know that. And Bob has been one of the greatest, he's been the driving force of the fundraising. You know, we've had multiple conversations and he's, he's done an awesome job. And we thank you guys, of course, for the 150,000. And I'm back with him saying that, you know, we could use a little more support, which would help you with that timeline if you want. You dump the cash in there and we'll make it happen. But realistically, I also want to thank like the, the press here, the BG Independent News and Jan has been, you know, whenever we call them, they'll come out and take pictures of us eating cake. And, you know, they get it out to the public and all that's really, really helps. And I'm looking at, you know, we have future projects coming where you, you know, we're talking about sidewalks and trails and all of that things. Well, you know, you're talking about the multi-use trail that goes out to Brim Road. Well, it's going to land at the community center. So, you know, all of this, the pickleball courts kind of tie in to a lot of the things that we're doing. And you're building a housing development right there beside the community center. You know, having that is all, is going to help all of that as far as the developing of that household, those neighborhoods and whatnot. And the other thing I'm going to say is, you know, we've been contacted by Wood Lane, which is part of the community center, of course, and, and they've seen us, you know, giggling and having fun and said, hey, we want to teach our Wood Lane people to play this game. So in March, we're, we're going to start, you know, giving lessons to the Wood Lane people. And these are all volunteers, you know, I'm not making any money on any of this stuff. And it's, it's just, you know, we're, if we get the courts in, we know it's going to spread. Now, having said that, there's a difference between, we're looking at a large range of money, you know, with, we know that Keener Park up north of Fallen Timbers a year ago, so built courts, six courts for maybe 280,000. Perrysburg has the Rotary Park is exactly what we want. You don't have to worry about looking for anything. That's the design you want to use. And we would prefer, if we use that, to have eight courts. Now we're looking at 350,000, which, you know, we don't feel that that's out of the price range because most of the neighborhoods that are building four, six courts are already looking at expanding. So, you know, if we want to do this right and we have, there, you know, we've had difficulty finding grants because the grants are mostly short-term. They're said, well, if you can get it done in three months, you know, we'll do it. Well, we don't have a facility and we'd have nothing to start with. Well, that's good and bad because if we, we have the option now to build something from scratch that's top-notch. And, you know, that's kind of where we really want to go in the long term. So, and again, I don't know if you guys have any questions. I mean, I play the game all the time. And, you know, what we're willing to help out in any way and just be an advisor so we don't do it wrong.
We could do a city council tournament.
Tournaments are a way to fund it. My wife's playing one, March 1st. The, Fort Meigs, Perrysburg, Holland, there's tournaments every weekend. They're fundraisers. We did a little mini one with like 16 people at the community center. We raised 320 bucks. But it's, you know, just to see what, what it took to run one. And it's not difficult and there's people that can help you. But like you say, you're going to, once we get the courts, then it's going to be a question of, you know, you can fund them with tournaments, just like you're doing baseball or anything else. And, you know, clubs will come, people will come, you can figure a way to get money. And we can help you fundraise.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
We have a group of three individuals, Audrey Seitz, Tyler Hallman, Evan Thornton.
I am, oh, sorry.
No, you go right ahead.
I am Audrey Seitz. I live on campus in Centennial Hall.
Okay.
I'm Tyler Hallman. I live in Chrysler Hall at BG SU.
And I'm Evan Thornton. I live in Founder's Hall.
Is that also at BG SU?
It is.
Hi, everyone. I am Audrey Seitz and we are Bowling Green State University students who are representing the lead 2010 Leadership and Service class. We are partnering with BG Save Our Neighborhoods Group to help them with the Rock the Block event that is taking place on April 6th with the rain date of April 13th. Within our class, we have four groups helping to plan this event. We are representing the communications group. In addition to our group, there is a project planning group, a fundraising group, and a recruitment group. In our leadership class, we talk a lot about different leadership theories. And one that we talk about a lot that we are planning on to incorporate with our partnerships in BG Song is servant leadership, which focuses on leading by serving the needs of others. Overall, our goal is to implement the leadership theories discussed in our class with our community partner BG Song to support the neighborhoods and residents in Bowling Green, Ohio. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tyler Hallman, also part of the communications group within our Leadership 2010 class. And I'm here to talk more about the Rock the Block event taking place on April 6th and different ways to participate. This is going to be a wonderful opportunity for the community of Bowling Green, where multiple volunteers will set out to revitalize, restore, and reinvent many landscapes across town. I have came here today to talk about how you can be a part of this project. Whether you support BG Song's cause, want to see the quality of your surrounding environments improve, or support other values that pertain to Rock the Block school. So what is Rock the Block really? On April 6th, multiple volunteers will set out and get together to help different properties that have requested assistance with their home's exterior. There will be a variety of tasks, from simply trimming the landscape to helping with replace old fences. So it will show that, I'm sorry. Oh, showing that anybody will be able to participate and receive a workload that fits their needs. 15 house owners have already been a part of this project and need help. We are so appreciative of the existing support and we came here today to keep informing others how to make a difference in this community. Currently, we are requesting donations, tools for the day of the event, and volunteers to rock the block. If you're interested, we have handed out flyers and we'll be handing out flyers at the end of the meeting where you can contact us. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Evan Thornton with the Leadership Class Communication Group. And I wanted to give you some backgrounds on our partners putting on this event, BG Save Our Neighborhoods Group. BG Song has been raising awareness and doing community work since July of 2022. They originally formed when a PR district was being proposed that they felt was not beneficial to the community. So they got together to raise awareness and oppose said proposal. They drafted a petition and with their cumulative passion, they were able to raise over 600 signatures. Now they are taking that passion for bettering the community and putting it into Rock the Block. They understand the needs of the community and have deemed this a great start to be able to help residents. Working with BG Song, our class has done a lot of the planning for the event. And now our main priority is getting donations and recruiting more volunteers. So once again, if you're interested in helping this cause, please take a flyer on your way out. We thank you all for your time and listening to us. Have a great evening.
All right, thank you very much.
Rose Drain?
Well, I'm here, excuse me, I'm here as president of Bowling Green Save Our Neighborhoods Group and just want to express my appreciation to Adam Smith, the Leadership and Service Class teacher, for agreeing to partner with us and his students with us on this project. It's really a shining example, I think, of what living in a university community can do in terms of university and town partnerships. So we're excited and trepidatious to some extent about taking on this initial project. We sent the letter out to nearly 400 homeowners in the northern part of the PR district. And 15 folks have signed up. So we completed homeowner visits this packed weekend during that freezing Saturday and Sunday. And it was really cool to meet the people who had applied. A couple are young families with kids with both parents working full-time. Our oldest person is 94, followed right behind by a 93-year-old and a few people who are retired, older folks. So it's, I think, going to be a good community coming together opportunity. And wish us well, share what you can for the day of the event and hope to see involved in some way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's everyone.
Okey-dokey. That brings us to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I have two pieces of, two ordinances. Well, first, an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024. And an ordinance amending appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold? On behalf of the Transportation and Safety Committee of Council, I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to apply for safe routes to school project funds through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation to construct the Crim to Carter Park shared use path and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Ms. Phipps?
From the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, I have two ordinances this evening. The first is an ordinance accepting the acquisition of approximately 1.934 acres of land in center township, Wood County, Ohio, from Court R. Davis, the agent for Abbott Laboratories petitioner. And the second is an ordinance establishing interim zoning of IE Innovation and Employment zoning for the approximately 1.934 acres of land located on Nims Road and North Dixie Highway and recently annexed to the city as petitioned for by Court R. Davis, agent for Abbott Laboratories.
Lastly, I have an ordinance from the Utilities Committee. Ordinance authorizing Utilities Director to execute the Northern Power Pool participant schedule with American Municipal Power Incorporated. And that brings us to our official reports this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. I don't really have a formal report. We'll be happy to entertain any questions that you have. But I did want to acknowledge the robust discussion before this meeting around utilization of the ARPA funds. I think we all would agree that to date, we have made a very positive, significant impact in the community utilizing those funds. And appreciated council's effort to work with the administration to make certain that we were doing just that, utilizing those funds, recognizing the unique nature of those, one-time distribution. We've done, I think, a really great job of, of having, distributing those in many ways within the community and having a very positive impact. So thank you for all your hard work on that. Tip of the cap to those responsible for organizing the Rock the Block event. I was unaware of this until today. It's a really great-looking project. So congratulations on organizing the event. Rose, I'll touch base with you after the meeting and figure out a way that I can help support the event because I think it's a really great collaboration between your group and these great young students at the university having a positive impact in our community and our neighborhood. So thank you very much for all your hard work on that. Completes my report. Subject to any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you very much. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter?
I have no report this evening, subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Tretter this evening? Okay, City Attorney, Mr. Brown?
No report.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brown this evening? Okay, Public Infrastructure Director, Mr. O'Connell?
Good evening. Every year about this time, or first part of March, the American Public Power Association has a legislative rally in Washington, DC. And so I get to go to DC for a couple of days, two or three days typically. And we meet with our senators and representatives to talk about public power issues that can affect us at the federal level. So we do have meetings scheduled with Senator Brown and Senator Vance, their office and staff, and also Representative Lada to talk about those issues. Likely they'll be focused on the federal sequestration, which has impacts, impacts some of the Build America bonds that some projects were funded by, as well as we continue to talk about transmission costs within the overall electric grid and how those costs are passed down from the transmission owners like First Energy and AEP. And then they get passed, get passed to the city and then our customers have to pay for those, those charges as well. Those, those can basically amount to about roughly 25% of our total power supply costs go to transmission, transmission and capacity. And we, we continue to see those costs increasing. We're having some meetings this, this week with the AMP membership to focus our, our messaging at, at those meetings. And so not just members, AMP members from Ohio will be there, but also all the other, I think, seven to nine states that AMP is, is, has, has members in now. They will also be sending representatives to DC with their respective legislators. So that'll be, that'll be Monday through Wednesday of next week. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Are there any questions for Mr. O'Connell? We wish you a safe trip and a safe return.
Yeah, I'm driving, so I'm going to deal with the airports that way. Thank you.
Let's see, council committee reports. Do I have any council committee reports? I will, I will just say that we had a committee of the whole meeting this evening at 6:00 where we received information from the administration with regard to the status of ARPA funds and had conversation about that and then provided some direction to the administration moving forward. Any other committee reports?
I don't know if this would be the appropriate spot to mention it, but I suppose since it involves scheduling a committee meeting, it would be. I had the opportunity to meet with the city attorney this past week to discuss a possible lease agreement or an early draft of that agreement related to the Dog Parks Committee. It's my understanding and my hope that one of the next stages there would be to schedule a public hearing, presumably the Public Lands Committee, and gather public input on the location and I imagine the terms of that lease agreement. Is that a fair summary of where we're at on that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, well, so that, that is not my committee, but that's my report.
Okay, so you're going to schedule a meeting?
Yeah, so we got the, we got the, looked at the lease today. I got it from Hunter. So we're looking into that. We're seeing where things can be clarified. And once some of those things get clarified a little bit, we'll be setting up that meeting.
All right, sounds good. Any other council committee reports this evening?
Any other Council Committee reports this evening? All right. Well, that brings us to the reading of legislation. Jody.
Legislation for first reading. Ordinance number 9172 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 9172 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Okay. The rules are suspended for ordinance 9172.
Ordinance number 9172 for second and third readings. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt ordinance 9172.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jody.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9172 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9173 for first reading. Ordinance amending appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 9173 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 9173.
Ordinance amending, ordinance for second and third reading. Ordinance number 9173, amending appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt ordinance 9173.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jody.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9173 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9174 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to apply for safe routes to school project funds through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation to construct the CREAM to Carter Park shared use path and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we suspend the rules and give ordinance 9174 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's properly moved and seconded. Jody.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
All right. The rules are suspended for ordinance 9174.
Ordinance number 9174 for second and third readings. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to apply for safe routes to school project funds through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation to construct the CREAM to Carter Park shared use path and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause to ordinance 9174.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Jody.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Okay. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 9174.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9174. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jody.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 9174 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9175 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to execute the Northern Power Pool participant schedule with American Municipal Power Inc. Ordinance number 9176 for first reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 1.934 acres of land in center township Wood County, Ohio from Court R. Davis, agent for Abbott Laboratories petitioner. Ordinance number 9177 for first reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of IE, Innovation and Employment zoning for the approximately 1.934 acres of land located on Nims Road and North Dixie Highway and recently annexed to the city of, the city as petitioned by Court R. Davis, agent for Abbott Laboratories.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
We need to set the required public hearing on ordinance 9177. Jody has asked us to set that hearing for Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 6:45 PM.
April 1st?
April 1st.
Not fooling me, are you?
What time?
6:45.
Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 9166 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting sections of Chapter 33 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio concerning employment policies. Ordinance number 9167 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, de-icing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 9168 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts and/or participate in state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase and/or lease of vehicles, equipment, and completion of projects, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes. Ordinance number 9169 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into construction contracts for the Clarifier Improvements Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility. Ordinance number 9170 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to apply for a loan and execute a loan agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority, O EPA, OWDA, for a water pollution control loan fund, W P C L F program for construction of the Clarifier Improvements Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility. Legislation for third reading. Ordinance number 9161 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 31.04 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9161.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9161 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9162 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Sections 33.01G, Pay Bands 3, 4, and 5, and 33.01J of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established.
President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt ordinance 9162.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 9162 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9163 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Sections 33.09A and 33.09C of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding fire division composition.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt ordinance 9163.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes. Ordinance 9163 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9164 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.18A of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salaried employees not subject to overtime pay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
By brief explanation, before I make my motion, there's a minor error in this ordinance. One of the class titles currently reads Sustainability and Public Outreach Coordinator. I therefore move to strike the words "and" public outreach from the title so that it will then read Sustainability Coordinator.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Jody.
Phipps.